We only have four members of the zoning board here tonight. And for a decision on any one of the cases, we have to have four concurrent votes. So just point that out at this point in time. We'll address each as they come up if we have an issue. So Chuck, could you take a roll call, please?
Sure.
Michael Cornell. John Bitsum.
Here.
Richard Kiefer. Richard Munian. William Gerber.
Here.
Connie Casey.
Here.
Joan Eusman.
Here. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda that we have before us tonight?
I'll make that motion.
You've got a motion, can I get a second? Connie, second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I just got the copy of the meeting minutes, have you guys had a chance to look at them? They weren't included in our package, so can you give a second to take a quick run through with them? Okay, when someone's had a chance to review them, finish reviewing them, I need a motion to approve them, it's typed. If there's any changes, let me know. Which one is it, well? Oh, the second one.
Is that what we're giving them?
What's our V T U dash part of the decision?
That's some more torn extension. Just extending more torn, uh, double, uh... C T three is that extending, and we're not doing that, but we're just putting it on the camera, isn't it?
Okay, we got a motion to approve this type. Second, we will. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we've got a significant agenda before us tonight. We want to do some of the smaller review cases to get those done first, or?
We'll go on.
Let's just get that a moment.
Okay. All right, so the first case in our agenda is case S U dash one dash sixteen, Enbridge Energy and the Partnership. Do you want to introduce this, or?
This is the zoning case where Enbridge is proposing, especially for contractor storage yard. You can put a storage yard in a maintenance building. The maintenance building including an office and some shop space for them to do some maintenance work on. Case you tabled last month, and in tabling that, you asked for two documents. One was a copy of a site plan, more detailed site plan, of which was provided to you in your report. The second one was a copy of a more detailed septic system plan, which was also a copy into your report. The large documents of both of those are in front of you on the table, so both of those have been provided to you, they've been devised and provided to you. In regards to that. In regards to the septic permit, you'd asked that the county health department issue a permit in regards to private sewage disposal system. On the very back of the report that you got for this month, you have a copy of a letter from the Lewis County Public Health Department, which is dated November first of this year, which is addressed to myself. And it reads that per our meeting on October twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, with Enbridge representatives regarding the new Enbridge Pipeline Maintenance Building's private sewage disposal system, we're satisfied with the preliminary plans and incorporate changes as was discussed. In moving forward, you must request the following. They need a permit to install private sewage disposal system to be submitted to this department prior to any construction. As the public health department into the proposed subsurface seepage bed area, be roped off to protect the area from soil compaction from construction equipment as the project's being constructed. If any questions, please do not hesitate to contact this office. Donnie Simmons, Director of Dogma Health. I'll let that out briefly. The septic system, there are two separate septic systems. And we have two separate tanks going to be coming off the shop area, and those tanks will be pumped. And then they'll have a more conventional septic system coming off of the office area, which is on the plan, and they have a tank that runs to the seepage bed, which is in an area that's undisturbed, so they can put it in that area, so the seepage bed will work more properly, that's how that goes. And part of the meeting was they had had to enlarge the seepage bed area to meet the health department regulations and some of those issues. So, the permit from that, they're gonna hire a general contractor to take care of the project. And that general contractor's gonna hire a septic contractor, and septic contractor's getting the permit. So, septic system's in line, it's just has to be formalized, finish the plans, as was discussed. At that, I'll finish my comments.
Okay, who represents this case?
I do.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, it's Jake Gancarzick, that's spelled G A N C A R C Z Y K.
Okay, we need an address for you.
Sure, it's fourteen fifteen Black Road. That's Julia.
Okay, you prefer to be sworn or affirmed?
Sworn.
Sworn, okay.
Do you saw some sort of testimony to this case, now hearing should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
I do. All right, good evening, zoning board. On this panel, my name is Jake Gancarzick, joined here by Mr. John Spesia, we're legal counsel of Enbridge Energy. Along with me is Shil Harbrey and Matt Como from Enbridge. We also have Leonard Haybear, was here last time, he's the project manager. And we're joined here today with Patrick Schoenfeld, he's our project architect. As Mr. Shil has explained, we're here seeking approval for a storage yard and maintenance building. It's on the east side of Highway twenty-three, across our existing offices and facilities. To the south is the two pump stations that this board approved in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and fourteen. For tonight, the board required us to revise our plans after meeting with health department. Myself, our project engineer, Mr. Shil was at the meeting as well, sat down and addressed questions that the health department had, and implemented changes recommended by Mr. Simmons. As you can see in the drawings before you, those changes are represented. The leach field is placed, as Mr. Shil said, through the soil conditions. Mr. Simmons asked us to, wanted a little larger field, which we have done. Again, we've submitted these to Mr. Simmons. He's satisfied with the plans as they are right in front of you. We also, as we had mentioned, moved the fence line, we put the trees to the outside of the fence line. And then the only other change in the drawing was the detention pond is slightly smaller than it was on the original set of plans. So at this time, I'd like to reserve time at the conclusion of any comments or questions you may have. And once again, we're seeking approval tonight for this.
Okay, so the main change, can you highlight what the main changes were from what you proposed prior to what you're putting in front of us tonight?
Sure. You can see the, on the original plan I submitted in September as part of the permanent application, the fence line was on the outside of the trees. We thought for aesthetic purposes that we would put the trees on the outside of the fence line. Before, the leach field was actually located in this area between the...
Yard.
The yard and the building, and we have since moved it up beyond the yard. And that was after we had hired a local contractor to come in, he did soil samples, and this was his recommended location.
Okay, we're seeing leach field was, leach field was seeping bed, up near tree, in the tree line?
Yes. And I said the detention area, based off our tests, calculations, this is more than capable, more than enough than we need. So it was reduced a little bit in size, I think before it was this whole area, and now it's this area here.
The area that's inside this water?
Yes, did. And those are, those are the changes. Besides that, on the building, they flipped the parking spots, they went from one side, they would just flip the spots, so that's it. Like I said, this drawing over here is the actual septic plan. This is the plan that actually Mr. Simmons had reviewed, and these are, these are with his changes. So this is what we had sent to him, and this is what he said he's satisfied with.
This was previously just gonna be an entire tank, right, it was gonna be pumped privately without, so?
Well, originally, on the drawing, it was a leach field. We had highlighted an area, bolded an area here that was leach field would be. And then we were thinking about maybe going to a holding tank. But after talking to some local contractors, and then meeting with Mr. Simmons, this is the, this is the plan that we'll be going with.
What's the reason for the smaller detention pond?
Sure, if we could.
Yeah, the, the reason it was originally when we did that, we hadn't engineered the site completely, and hadn't engineered the pond, we hadn't done all the hydrology calculations. Once we got that done, that was more of a placeholder that we showed up, we knew there was a bad big location to put it. And once our engineer had, had taken all the water runoff of the pervious, impervious surfaces, we, that's the size that now it needed to be.
So you're confident with the water runoff that's gonna be big enough?
Yes, yeah.
Appeared to be a very large concern in the green property.
It, it was actually very marginal whether we even needed the detention pond or not. But we think it's just being good citizens and, and providing that.
Did your general contractor prepare those?
No, this was prepared by...
Yeah, this was prepared...
Can we get your name and address for the record, since you're testifying?
My name's Patrick Schoenfeld, S C H O E N F E L D T. And I work for Studio Architecture. And our address is eight sixteen North Walker Avenue, Suite one hundred, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Seven three one zero two, oh, seven three one zero two.
Okay, do you prefer to be sworn or affirmed?
I'm sorry?
Do you prefer to be sworn or affirmed?
Sworn.
Could you please raise your hand, you saw some sort of testimony to this case, now hearing should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
I do.
Okay, so is your architecture firm that?
Yes, we're, we're the architectural, we're the architect of record on this project. And it was my civil engineer that I hired to do the engineering for the septic system and all the water runoff.
And once again, this is Jake Gancarzick for the record. The engineer is, is the gentleman that went with me when Mr. Shil to Mr. Simmons, and he was answering all the questions.
Okay, so you haven't chosen a general contractor yet for this project?
This, this one, yeah. The project, the project has just recently ended, and there's a contractor who's received a letter of intent, obviously we can't...
I was just curious if they'll have their own ideas on detention ponds and that. If you prepared these, we will.
I think, if I'm correct, it's key for telling excavating that help design the system.
Okay, zoning board members, if you have any other questions? Anything else you'd like to add?
I'd just like to reserve time for some closing statements.
Okay. Do you have any comment from the planning commission? They wasn't wanting to ask me anything. Are they gonna take a look at this, or?
No, I just wanted you, you're fine.
All right. All right, with that, do we have any interested parties or objectors? Okay, can you, can you, or do we need to come forward?
Do you want me to swear anything?
Any name and address?
Mark Heil, fifteen eight sixty-three, East twenty-one twenty, North Road, Pontiac, Illinois.
Okay, do you prefer to be sworn or affirmed?
Sworn.
Do you saw some sort of testimony to this case, now hearing should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
Yes, sir. Um, I, can I look at the plans really quick, I just wanna ask a question? The new, um, leach field and all that, we're, is that on this plan, or this?
It's over here.
So this is it? So twenty...
Twenty-two hundred and twenty-three?
Twenty-two hundred and twenty-three, okay, so we're over here. Does there have to be any studies on water flow or anything? I mean, I'm just worried, my neighbors and I are concerned of pollution getting into our wells and septics in this area, with everything going on. And, you know, I mean, we don't know which direction this flows, we don't know what comes out of this septic system or leach field, and... You know, we're concerned, has there been any studies on any of that to, to tell us that we are safe?
I'm, I'm assuming that's something that the public health department addresses?
Okay.
Because that's not an issue that the zoning board can address.
Can Enbridge address that?
If you have an answer, if we can...
Sure. We, we ran soil samples, which Mr. Simmons from the health department received those soil samples, and based off the soil samples, that was the proper placement that septic.
There's a lot of clay in the area. We, I have the report here too, so I'm just curious, you know?
But you, somewhere you said you've got a holding tank here, that's for like your shopways, right?
Correct, yes.
Well, none of that's going through the, 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 uh, no, septic system, that would be basically just like...
That's septic system, that would be...
Joe Row has to put in for a house or whatever, it's office waste.
Okay. The, um, the lighting that's associated with this project, we were told it's gonna be shrouded lighting, so we won't... Is that gonna be shrouded lighting, like on the project that, with the pumping stations and they can put up there and stuff?
These are all dark sky rated facility.
Okay.
Because of light fixtures, every, every light fixture on the exterior of the building and in the site lighting is all dark sky rated.
Okay, so they're different fixtures than what's on by the pumping stations?
Yes, I saw this, yeah, these only put, they don't throw any light up at all.
Okay, we were told multiple times, under oath also, that the lighting for the other project was gonna be shrouded, which it's not, you know? And we, we deal with the light bleed from that all the time, and we were told that Enbridge was gonna work on it. I would think good citizens or good neighbors would definitely be concerned about their next door neighbors with the light bleed, but obviously Enbridge hasn't considered us in that aspect, so. The, the property that this project is being built on, one final question. The Gilbert's home that was purchased for three hundred and seventy-five thousand, that was worth one hundred and sixty-one thousand, was that, did they have to, did you have to buy that property at that price to put this expansion in? Or is that for future expansions? I'm just curious. Do, I have a, if you wanna see the property, if you don't know what I'm talking about, I can show it to you.
Sorry, can you repeat your question?
The Gilbert, can I show it to you, maybe on a map, it'd make more sense? There's a property, twenty-two hundred is here, this is where your proposed project is going. And this property here, on three acres, was purchased for three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And I'm just wondering if that property was purchased, if you had to do that for this, or if that's just for future project expansion?
I'm, I'm not really sure what the relevance of this has to do with...
I'm just asking a question, that's all.
Yeah, I was just asking a question, there's, I don't see that, Mr. Heil, I don't know how it's related to...
I just wanted to, I just...
...the actual building of this facility.
Okay, I was just wondering if that had to, if that was part of the agreement, that was all. That all that land had to be purchased to put this project on it, that was my question.
It's not, it doesn't appear to me to be in the footprint of where they're placing their expansion here.
Okay.
If it was, then I would say that's maybe an issue for, we could maybe address, but I, I just see it's outside the scope of what the zoning board is having to look at.
Okay, it's just a question.
For part of this expansion.
Okay. Those are the questions I had, thank you.
Any other interested parties or objectors? Okay, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Charlotte Ford. One five eight four five, East twenty-one twenty, North Road, Pontiac, Illinois.
Do you prefer to be sworn or affirmed?
Yes, I'll be sworn.
Do you saw some sort of, the testimony should give on this case, now hearing should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
Yes, I do. I just have a question about, I know it's, you can't tell us who is going to be building your, doing all your contracting work and everything, but have you considered if they will be local laborers and those that live in Pontiac? Or will it be a company that will be outside of Pontiac? And laborers that will be outside of Pontiac, in Livingston County?
Right. All I can say at this point is that the general contractor that we received a little bit on, it's from Livingston, and it's a union contractor.
Okay, so people will be, that are gaining, that will be employed, most likely will be living in Livingston, out of Livingston County.
I, I'm not sure where the local ends and where it begins from Livingston. So they'll be union workers hired by union rules, by union contract.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
That's all I have here.
Okay, any other interested parties or objectors? Okay, then closing statements, zoning board order, do you have a closing statement? You really only asked a question, you didn't provide testimony, but I'll give you the opportunity to provide a closing statement.
It would not pertain to the building, so I probably not, okay, be able to, thank you.
No, thanks, no.
No, just, we seek approval for this project.
Okay. All right, can you close this case then? Do you need a motion?
I'll move to close zoning case, S U dash one dash one six.
Okay, got a motion, so if the motion closed, we always motion in the positive, so it's a motion to approve.
Approve.
S U dash one dash sixteen. Okay, I've got a motion, can I get a second? Got a second, discussion.
Michael Cornell. John Bitsum.
Yes.
Richard Kiefer.
Richard Munian.
William Gerber.
Yes.
Connie Casey. Joan Eusman.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next case, case B dash one dash zero two.
Is there anybody representing Enbridge property here this evening? What happened here this evening?
We don't need to, table or? Okay, they might show. Okay. Okay, moving on to the next case then, case B dash eight dash zero nine, a review case.
Okay, for Lewis County zoning case, V eight oh nine review, we need evidence of public hearing published on October the twenty-sixth of this year. We have notified the strong property owners of this review of this variance case. This is a variance that, its renewal, you know, zoning ordinance requirements that allows for mobile home to be located on same tract, which is approximately one acre in size, in northeast corner, the southeast quarter of Section twenty-one of Nebraska Township at one seven four eight nine north, three hundred East Road. As report goes, there is a mobile home property that was approved. In approving this mobile home, the zoning board has basically asked, there's a variance is approved, has asked to continue to review this every so often, because we have mobile homes, there are special uses, that had to be approved as a special use, and the zoning board decided to review them every once in a while just to see if they're still being resided in and used, as they were presented to the zoning board for the new members. And we have changed those regulations through the years where they now are, have been newer, placed on a foundation as they come before you. So this is at the time when we're approving and being placed on the property, you see placed in a mobile home park, and then just to kinda keep track of where they're at, the condition of them, and the zoning board asks to review them every so often, just to extend that out. So this particular case, we did it, you have to review it again in three years, so it ended at three years, as far as where this is being reviewed. The location of this property is part of the report, which we have in front of you, is it's just to the west of Flanagan, along the Ridley, Flanagan Blacktop. The location of it, we did prove it through the different variances, as far as why it was on the property, and it's still placed there. Anything else to say at this point in time?
Okay, who, who represents this case?
I do, Glenn Falkers. Seventeen five two five, north, three hundred, five hundred.
Okay, do you prefer to be sworn or affirmed?
Do you saw some sort of testimony to this case, now hearing should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
I do.
Okay, well can you tell us more about this case?
My father-in-law is still living there, and it's, it's on a concrete block foundation, I mean, it's nice place.
And you live on the, the, the...
I live adjacent, this is forty-eighty-nine, I live across the lot, seventy-five two five, across the truck shed line, pretty close.
Okay.
Seventeen five thirteen, as far as you're interrupting in between.
Okay.
We keep an eye on him, he keeps an eye on us. Get block is viewed for the trailer, so he makes us move.
He still comes and goes from the property he places? Any issues with the, with the home?
What's that?
Any issues with the home?
Nice place. It's a manufactured home, it's not really a trailer, it's two by six, it's gorgeous.
So more of like a pulled together, everything?
No, it's a mosh, what do you call it, many moshes, yeah. It's got a shingle roof and everything, it's nice.
I forget from the last time you listed it, the, the, how old is that?
I think it's ninety-four, isn't it?
I guess this doesn't say.
What you've improved it is, we've gone through the hearing, as we've gone through the hearing process, it's been improved, it's not, we're gonna be destroyed and stuff like that, so it's, it's improved as we've gone through the process.
You gotta wash the mold off the north side, you know? You gotta wash some mold off the north side, you know, that's the rule. It's all the buildings been that way this year, and it's both been bad.
Okay, any questions from the zoning board? Anything additional you'd like to add, add?
I appreciate we can go three years again, at least.
Okay, I've got to ask for interested parties or objectors first, is there any interested parties or objectors this time? Okay, there, any interested parties or objectors, do you have a closing statement you'd like to make? You know you'd like three years?
Three years or more, I don't know, if you have any, you know, that's, whatever we could, be agreeing.
Does that change, is something happen to his father-in-law? Would I want to say the tenant or the ownership changes?
Well, it's a variance, so it's unusual that we're reviewing it, um, but since it's a variance, that goes with the land, so it doesn't change, it's not special use granted to the party that's there. It's changing zoning, so...
I guess you could do this in the past, if you put it, review it in three years or whatever, unless I feel necessary, then if he passes away, I can be notified about it, we could bring it back in if, if I want to change residency or whatever.
I guess that would be my point, we gotta do that.
We could do it that way, if you'd like to, if you feel comfortable with that way, you'd do it that way.
Because it's not automatically required to do that.
Correct.
Yeah, we need to, we need to put that condition on there. All right, can we close this case? I need a motion.
I'll make that motion to close case. C four oh two, or, no, V eight oh nine.
Okay, we've got a motion, can I get a second? We've got a motion, a second discussion?
Was your motion for a hundred years, three, three years, but unless... Rock, you know, changes, or however you want to word that.
So we've got a motion to approve, with a review in three years or sooner, if, if...
If everybody was on here, that was your first.
It's determined by the zoning administrator. Okay?
Exactly what I said.
Any other discussion on this? Call for a question?
Michael Cornell, John Ditzem?
Yes.
Richard Kiefer? Richard Runyon? William Gerber?
Yes.
Connie Casey? John Eusman?
Yes.
Okay, you saved it for years, thank you. Okay, our next case is case SU dash four dash zero one. Chuck, could you give us an overview?
For Lewis County zoning case, SU four oh one, review, um, we did have the notice of public hearing published for the review on October the twenty-sixth of this year, and we did notify the Shawn property owners of the property in question for the zoning case, we're reviewing this evening. Uh, this report does pertain to the request for a special use permit, almost identical to what we just did, in that it was a site for a manufactured home in an A.G. agricultural district, it's placed on five acres of land in section six of Esmond Township. It's at one, two, nine, eleven, east, twenty-six hundred, North Road. It's your last review, uh, you've been asked to look again at this in three years, so that's what we're discussing at this point in time. With the map you have in front of you, it gives you the location of the property, um, in Esmond Township, which should be northeast of Cornell, basically. Uh, the first map is the county area, and the next one is in Esmond Township area, it gives you the location of it in that area. And, uh, this mobile home, you see a couple different names on there, it says Mark Meister, R. Wood. R. Wood was a previous tenant of it, and the Meisters bought, bought it, and they're here for the last review, so they're the current occupants of this particular manufactured home, mobile home and property, so it just continues to be occupied, continues to be used at these particular times.
Okay, who represents this case? I'll leave your names and address for the record.
I'm Little Smaster.
Okay? Address, please?
Twenty-six, one fifty-three, north, twelve minute east room.
Okay?
Lester Leiser, same address.
Okay, do you prefer to be sworn or affirmed?
Sworn, I'm willing to be affirmed, I mean, if you want.
Do you solemnly swear the test we should give in this case during hearing should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
Okay. Can you fill us in on your case? What, anything further that Chuck didn't mention, you'd like us to know about the property?
Very little, mainly, yes.
Do you have access to that?
No.
No? Do I have to put a relative, just?
Do they have long-term tenants, or have they been, are they in and out?
No, he has been there ever since we've moved the place, very good to know.
Okay, so Chuck says similar to our last cases, it's a manufactured building, so it's not, uh, I take it it's got some quality that like it's big building?
Yeah.
What year was this placed on the record, you know?
Two thousand eighty-one. This case is SU four oh one.
So that's when it was originally, originally reviewed, um, so it would have been two thousand and one, two thousand and two, depending on the age of it, I forget when exactly it was placed on property,
but that's basically when it was put on it, so... Fairly new at that point in time, might have been five to ten years old when it was placed on property. If I got this right, it's originally placed on the property because it's a ten-acre timber piece of gra, property. It was fi, it was five acres to the east, where the gentleman bought all the property, and he built a home on that eastern portion of the property, and then he had his daughter and son-in-law, which where they are was, live in this particular mobile home here, so they're a family, she were there, living there, and taken here, so it was newly developed for them, because of the new septic system, stuff in two thousand and one, where it was placed. Um, one house was sold, these people moved away, you lived across the road, you kind of wanted to control the property, so you bought it. So, so you, you bought the property so that you could kind of control the tenants and who lived in here, okay?
I don't remember all that. That's where he gets the big bucks, so...
Any other questions from the zoning board? Any interested parties or objectors? Would you like to make a closing statement?
I guess that just kind of wraps it up.
Okay, thank you. All right, can we close this case then?
I'll make a motion to approve case SU four oh one, for three years.
Three years, three years.
That's what it was, wasn't it, three years, four?
Or don't extend it each time we have to come down.
I think three years was about a limit, wasn't it?
That's, that's, that's been imposed by years.
Okay, we've got a motion, nine seconds. Any discussion?
Call for a question.
Michael Cornell, John Ditzem?
Yes.
Richard Kiefer? Richard Runyon? William Gerber?
Yes.
Connie Casey? John Eusman?
Yes.
Okay, three more years. Thank you.
We gotta visit with the brothers a lot.
You guys have a good evening. Okay, the next case, case SU dash two dash fifteen. You have an update for us, Chuck?
Sure. For Lewis County zoning case, SU two fifteen, we did have the notice of public hearing published as a review of this case on October the twenty-sixth of two thousand sixteen. We have notified all the Shawn property owners of the property in question for this review of this particular case. Um, this was a special use that you approved a year ago, for Mr. Flipson to have a special use permit to allow for a indoor shooting range, and his rental service businesses that are part of some commercially developed property, and there were some variances granted for some setbacks distances, and it gives you the location of the property in the maps to go with it. It went through some zoning map amendments, and zoning text amendments, for us to get to that stage, where some of the property was residential, had to be zoned commercial, the zoning text is something that allowed for the shooting range, I believe, to be allowed in that particular zoning district, then we allowed for, um, special use from there. What I failed to give you, and I'll give it to you now, is the last set of minutes, which we actually approved, this particular zoning case, that has the approval on the zoning case in regards to that. One of the conditions on the approval of this particular case was that you do review it after a year, and then Mr. Flipson had some fairly extensive plans on using the property. He had begun his addition to the property, um, as your foundation, is your foundation complete, is that kind of where you're at on that, or are you still working on that? Okay, so he's still working on the foundation, and we'll kind of leave it at that point, so...
Okay, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, I'm Ryan Flipson, uh, address is eight, three, nine, Illinois, state round eighteen east, Streeter.
Do you prefer to be sworn or affirmed?
Sworn.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear the test we should give in this case during hearing should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it?
I do.
Okay, can you fill us in on what's been going on with your property, or?
Well, we, um, we've got over three hundred feet of walls to put in, for to complete the, for, you know, the basement, um, the foundation for the building. Um, we have, after tomorrow, we'll prepare for sixty-five feet tomorrow, hopefully, and then we'll have only about sixty feet left. So I have, um, by the end of, in the next two and a half weeks, we should have all the foundation, and go get for the floor, and then pour the lid, uh, the shooting range gets a concrete lid over it, so, so those will be poured. So we're looking at about a month or so to pour all the concrete, and start the above ground for it. We would have hoped to, we'll barter along, but, um, then we aren't right now, but we had, uh, get a robbery in, um, June, they pushed back off three months to repair the building, uh, the existing building, which all that works down now, the storage back open, and, uh, now we're focusing on getting the shooting range closed in, so we can work on that through later.
So this concrete that you're pouring is on the, like, the picture that you submitted is the, it's over here?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, are we just back to, you're just considering the extension of your building and the shooting range? That seems to be all that you, we talked about various things that you're going to do or use this property for. I'm just curious if that, this is now your main, and really concern, or if we're still looking at all the other businesses?
We're gonna have a shooting range, we're gonna have, above that, there'll be an archery range, and a bow, we're putting up bow shot, an archery range, and, and below that's a shooting range, pistol and rifle shooting range. And then, we're putting out, uh, I don't know if you've ever been to Menards, but Menards have a, a tool rental that's by their main counter, by their main entrance, that's pretty much all we're gonna have, is a small area for tool rental, for tools, and then some tools outside, like equipment outside, like a skid steer and an eddy excavator. And then we're gonna have a coffee shop, or some type of, uh, you know, burger counter or something in that same facility.
In the first floor, that is, you're still looking at all that, too?
Yep.
No drive-off windows, though, right?
No, we haven't figured it's drive-off windows, not too worried about that. It would work in angle.
Yeah.
It would work, it would work in angle, but they're on the other side.
So, do you have a, I mean, do you have a basic timeframe to when you want this enclosed and stuff like that, or, you're kind of weather dependent, obviously, in this like year, so...
Yeah, I do about ninety percent of it myself, so it takes me a lot longer than a lot of people, but, um, I, I'm hoping to have the, the walls, and the floor, everything, all the concrete work done in the bottom line, so, um, framing will go a lot faster, that underground work is, I like framing, I like plonies, there's twelve-foot walls, can't just stick in there, it takes some time.
We were given these pictures, you're, that depicts closely how, how, you know, progress so far, this moment that we were provided with?
You may already have provided as far as we are, I couldn't go with either one. Yeah, this, I'm farther than this. This is for, um, this is, I got six, I got, uh, that's about there, but I got another sixty-five feet ready to form, or ready to form tomorrow, but we won't barter than, than that.
Okay.
Takes about a week to do sixty feet, for a case. And I only have, after tomorrow, I'll only have sixty feet left to finish, so I was like two weeks away from being done with the walls.
But you got the floor and the...
The floor and the ceiling.
Ceiling will take quite a bit, I know.
The steel, it'll take a...
You gotta put a steel floor down, and pour it over top of that, I'm assuming.
Only on the one part, the other part will be framing, eventual thing, over there, um, it's like a lounge.
Yeah, but I mean, over the shooting range, just...
Over the shooting range is all concrete, but it...
Any other questions from the zoning board members?
I don't think we put a timeout on this, that I recall, we did see them develop, did you?
We did a one-year review.
We just reviewed, but...
Yeah. Um, well, it's a special use, so we can, we can review, we have to review, don't we?
Oh, yeah, you have to, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I guess I didn't hear your clear answer to Chuck, what is your timeframe for getting this wrapped up?
Get it wrapped up?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the concrete work out will be done in about a month, and then after that, it's framing, probably, I'm hoping it'll be over in the spring, you know, sometime in the spring or early summer, when I hope to have all everything done, and, you know, just, up the speed going.
Okay.
We're getting close, you know, um, you know, all right, when did you start on this?
Early in twenty fifteen, or the second case in twenty fifteen.
Well, it was on this, uh, November fifth of fifteen, but he didn't start until after, I'm sure he didn't start last November.
No. I can't remember.
And it's been a wet spring, and I'm assuming you started some of that.
Yeah, we started in the spring.
Give them a slight pour of concrete, cold weather better make it.
Well, they wanted to get in this position, but...
Yeah.
That's in great weather, so far, so...
So with the incident of the robbery, have you had to rethink security and that for your, for your job?
Yeah, we did some enhancements to the building, um, we hardened the, the front of the building, and the west end of the building, we can't drive, drive. Two-foot, eight-inch bowlers, steel bowlers all the way across the front, and some big gigantic holders on the, on the, on the west side.
Is that how they accessed your building, drive it into it?
They drove a vehicle through the building.
Oh.
Actually knocked the brick off the back, they drove the vehicle all the way into the building, destroying the K-Class cases, and actually knocked the brick off the back of the building, because it hit the back of the building.
Okay. And they didn't hurt themselves?
But they didn't get hurt in the process.
In the process, yeah. So in your photos, um, this is more my curiosity, did you, did you review the foundation for the, the building that you had existing after the part where they drove through it? So in your photos, this is more my curiosity, did you, did you review the foundation for the, the building that you had existing after the part where they drove through it? Did you review any of that foundation?
No, none of the foundation. The back wall was damaged a little bit in the framing, and the brick was, really, brick veneer. But the, the floor is really, it's a commercial building, it's a pretty, pretty well-made. But you could have pushed a shopping cart through the front door if they were, if they were wanting to push, you know, three guys could have drove through the front doors instead of driving a vehicle through it and destroying it. They'd have a hundred thousand dollars for the damage, you know. And got ten thousand dollars with the damage, whatever, you know. But they don't care.
All right, any other questions from the zoning board? Anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Any interested parties or objectors?
I can give one more thing, give some access there on the property, you can backfill that access there on the property, is that what the, the dirt piles there, is that kind of what that's for, for backfilling quite a bit?
Then there'll be, that's, in the next couple of weeks, I have to get all that out of there. Because part of that property is possibly, I'm under contract with a development to buy part of that property. So all that dirt's gotta get pushed on there. Some of it's backfill, and some of it will be excess, but regardless, it's gotta either be consolidated or moved out of there. But it'll be consolidated into a bigger file or, or moved out.
So on the lot where you proposed earlier, we, I remember we talked about a fence on that lot, and you're gonna have equipment sitting up there for rental? That's the lot you're talking about selling, or?
Well, just.
Having some kind of other business come in?
My, my parking lot shrunk maybe twenty feet, but that's about it. Somebody wants to, that acre, that acreage is like three acres or three and a half acres. Somebody wants to buy an acre and a half of it, or a little more than an acre and a half, to build a store on it.
Okay. Do you have a closing statement that you'd like to make?
No, thanks.
All right, can we close this case, please?
I'll make a motion to approve case SU two fifteen and review it in one year.
Same conditions as before?
Same conditions as before, yes.
Did we have those conditions in the text here?
On the minutes.
The minutes I was changing out to.
Yeah. Yeah, unless otherwise determined by the zoning administrator. Okay. So you're proposing all the conditions that we have?
Yes, same conditions.
Okay, so we've got a motion, maybe a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Michael Cornell, John Ditzel?
Yes.
Richard Kiefer?
Richard Runyon.
William Gerber?
Yes.
Kenny Casey? John Huesman?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Flipsen, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay. Next case on our agenda is SU dash ten dash ninety-five, a review case for the farms.
Okay, for Lewis County Zoning Case, SU ten ninety-five, review, we did have that notice probably hearing on October the twenty-sixth of two thousand sixteen. We did notify the Shire and Property Owners, haven't heard back from them. I did hear from Mr. Urban. This is an old little home that he used for a tenant that helped him on his cattle property, or dairy farm. And it's no longer being used, it's abandoned, it's older, it's junky, he's agreed to demolish it. So I'm asking that we'll give him through the winter into spring to demolish it. And if it's not demolished and buried by next March, we'll bring him back here like in April or something, or have you review in April? Give him some time to do this.
Yeah.
Give him plenty of time, that's nice.
We got a dairy barn down there.
You don't know? Doesn't count.
It doesn't count.
Doesn't count.
They call it concrete for a year to end, well.
All right, so do we need to?
You don't need to, I'm just, you don't have to do that, I'm just telling you that's what I'm gonna do. Because he's not a, you don't have to make a motion on that one, I'm just, that's what I'm gonna do, but just give him up. Would have been a lead way to do what he wants to do, so.
I, I go by, by one, exactly. Just been glad to listen.
So he'll get noticed that it needs to be demolished by spring?
He already knows it needs to be demolished. Yeah, we could, we're fine with that, that's kind of what's left, yeah.
Okay, all right, the next case is case SU four dash fifteen, and the case for Frederick Hitty.
Okay, for this County Zoning Case, SU four fifteen, we did have the review of this published on October the twenty-sixth. Given the notified Shire and Property Owners in regards to this. And Mr. Hitty was planning on developing this property with special use, where he's gonna have his, it's a contractor's storage yard. Where he can have a shop and office for his pickup truck maintenance, and office for his installation of medical equipment. He's decided to move that business to Pontiac. The building is under construction from Pontiac area. So he's no longer gonna be developing this property as he proposed, that we did buy it. So I am asking for a motion from the zoning board tonight that you rescind the special use so that we close it, and we don't have to worry about it anymore in the future. He's no longer doing that. I did, I did attach the back of the report, I did attach his email, it was sent to me after his legal notice that regarding the case, he's no longer pursuing special use from over the site. So I do have it in writing, and that's what he's planning on doing.
Okay, can we close this case with a motion, then, to rescind?
I'll make that motion to rescind case SU four fifteen.
Got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Also a question.
Dr. Cornell? John Ditzel?
Yes.
Richard Kiefer?
Richard Runyon.
William Gerber?
Yes.
Kenny Casey? John Huesman?
Yes.
Okay, so that leaves us with the County Zoning Case V dash four dash zero two, I assume, I didn't see anyone else coming around.
Yeah, I, I think we got, this is a, a case where this, this is a very assessed reviewed on an annual basis in that there was a, a mobile home located on the same piece of property as an existing residence. They use it as a tenant farmer on the property. We have a little bit of difficulty getting him in here, I guess we have to remind him a couple of times to get him in, this is the first time, and this is the first meeting, so we may have to remind him to come back in again, so probably bring him up the next appropriate meeting. It's an actual mobile home that's ever, it's behind a machine shed. It's a house, an area, a machine shed, it's a mobile home, the full room average brings all the way down. You do not see the mobile home from the road unless you know what you're looking for. So it's still there, so it's, it's hard to see, but we'll, we'll just propose to bring him back in, talk about it in the future. As far as I know, yeah. The way to bring him in, so I'll do about, so we'll remind him of that, so just.
All right, so we'll give this case a due?
We'll put that, we'll put that on our next meeting, and which we'll, we can review at that particular time, is that okay?
So potentially we'll have this on our December?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, bring this to other business. We need to discuss a date to continue the hearing on the zoning case for the wind energy tax amendment. Okay, this is, you guys are the agenda, it's not gonna be a continuance of a hearing. It'll be an administrative action, setting the hearing date is what we're doing tonight. So we're not taking any action on the case other than setting the next hearing date. Which we need to be, we need one day, is that right, to get noticed?
Fifteen days or so, yeah, well, the paper has to have a few days ahead of time, so it takes a while to do that. And our attorney is not, I don't think it works, but our attorney is not available the week of November twenty-eighth through December second. So that puts us into the first full week of December, of which that is where your regular meeting date is, is on December eighth. I do have two cases, or possibly three, with Maurice one, for you, you have the Ziggan Horn Campground, which comes up for its annual review, which you could do done, or else we could push it back to January. Have another camping, children's camping facility, which will be due to you, which needs to be reviewed. If they're okay, we're waiting till January, but not beyond January for that particular review, that particular case too. So you need to decide if you wanna have your regular zoning board meeting on December eighth to finish off the tax amendment. I try not to make a real long evening here, is what I'm trying to do here, so I'm trying to, so if you want a separate night for that, then that's fine. On the December eighth, you can have the regular meeting, or how are we gonna work this, but that's, but we do need some timeframes to make this for your regular meeting to make this work, to, or hearings and so forth.
So we could potentially have the two campgrounds and four, it's a, they show?
Correct.
If we have, for the regular meeting?
Correct.
Then what's left to do yet on that text amendment?
Need to approve the final copy of your recommendations.
I think that'll take us a little bit of time. I know the campground was an issue, the Ziggan Horn campground was an issue, normally passed it, so that took, had significant time with that, but it's, this is just review, so that'll take a while.
It took them a while to get some permitting and stuff for it, so.
But the other campground, was there conversation about that, or did you expect?
It takes, it takes explanation to, because it's a very unique situation.
Okay, and then they, they need it by Jan, they don't wanna wait till January, so I think we probably need to make sure we do this one in December, and if, for whatever reason, didn't have a January meeting, weather, whatever, you know, people being gone, so I guess I propose, I guess we can start the, start the next tier, the next portion of this hearing that night. And if we need to get it done, great, if we need to go into other additional nights, we can, we've done that before.
So you want, so you want to do the regular meeting, including that you wanna do Maurice's, the review of the Ziggan Horn case, the new camping facility, plus to review this, is what you're talking, saying, or start, we start this? I mean, that's fine, I'm having to issue that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't wanna be here long either, but with the beginning of December, you know, multiple nights.
If we didn't get it done, can we do it like two days later, once, I mean, do we?
You could, you could recess the meeting and do it.
We don't have to give the twenty days notice, if we recess, we can do it.
Yeah.
We'll have our main days.
I don't wanna come down on Saturday, but that, I could, that's no problem.
I ain't coming on Saturday.
I'll read the town.
I would be for trying to get it done at our regular meeting, right?
So you wanna conduct your regu, you want to conduct your regular business, and have that also, is that kind of what we're?
Right, that's what I proposed, I don't feel for how long it'll take.
Plus a little bite to solve this Christmas party or something like that.
Yeah, do you guys know if you're even available on the? John, are you available on the?
Should be. That's our regular meeting, right?
That's a Thursday, so Mike's not going to be available, most likely, because he has that class.
Yeah, that's our regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that might be a reason to not do the text amendment, because I would like as many of us to be here again. And Mike's had valuable input so far on this, this topic, so. I guess we could still start, start it, and then knowing that I would want Mike to at least take a look at this and provide his input on the record.
Maybe he'd be out of school for a critical vacation.
I doubt it, I would guess so there.
At least a week early, I'd say.
Yeah.
So keep, just keep that in mind, that we won't finish it that night, then, for sure. For such a, and that's probably a night Richard won't make it either. I don't know if his, his meetings are the first or second.
He probably won't either.
Thursday.
It's the second Thursday, so he probably can't make it either, so.
Okay, so we're gonna be minus those two guys. So do you still wanna start it, or do you wanna just put it all to another night? And have a nice short night that night?
I would rather have those two here.
Yeah, I would too, for all of it, yeah, okay. Well, then we need to take, we need to figure out a date for the?
Is the eighth the earliest week of that, do you think so? Could we have it on the sixth, Tuesday before that? I mean, would that give us our timetable?
That's the Ag and zoning, Ag and zoning is that, Matt?
No, that's when, the sixth, oh, yeah. Well, that's at, that's at six, if you, if you down by seven.
Oh, okay.
They're probably done by six oh five.
It was six fifteen last night.
You're hungry, are you, fix them?
I don't.
You're short, and with that, you sure you have it, huh?
Once we did it from back to back. I mean, it's hard to tell.
Why you started on the sixth, and then don't get it done in the junk?
Yeah.
We got a six, or, or seven, you know, two, if you have six and seven before that, it does. I think that way, you know, like Mike can be here probably around the middle.
You wanna do three nights on it?
No, I think we didn't get down on six, then six and seven, they could, you know, them two could be either, either one of the nights, they could probably be there.
Oh, but, yeah, that they're available?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, on a Tuesday, I'd like to start like at seven thirty, I got a basketball conflict.
Tuesday is, I'm available on Wednesday, can you?
Tuesday, I'm, I'm available on Wednesday also.
That's fine, seven thirty makes, if there is an Ag and zoning meeting, that gives extra time to conduct that meeting.
Wednesday would be better for me than the conflict.
We'd get out of the dishes anyway.
We, we know better. We know better. You're just dirty in the issue.
What's in a big war? There will be a committee meeting that night too, but that's, the finance meets, it's.
On Wednesday?
So they'd be probably done, their finance, probably be quick meeting.
He's broke, he's broke.
It should be fine, it should, it should not be, it shouldn't be anything.
Seven o'clock?
You're talking this summer?
Yes.
I understand that.
It's gonna be very limited, the committee is.
The reorgan, it's a reorganized board and committee, so.
Because they're gonna meet on Monday the fifth, for the reorganization. So they will not meet on Tuesday and Wednesday, because they won't have committees until after Wednesday, so if they need it, it'll be the following week, probably.
Okay.
Okay, so Wednesday, December seventh, seven o'clock?
Seven or seven.
Seven. Seven, seven okay for you guys? Seven's okay for me on that night.
So then you still wanna have the regular meeting on the eighth, then, for the reasoning cases? Back to back?
Yeah, that's okay. Why, do you want to change your argument of the meeting?
It's your committee, it's not mine.
Okay. All right, so now we've got approval on the findings of fact and decision. I'll need a motion to take the sign.
I'll make a motion, you know, thirty-one, four.
The findings of fact for tonight. Okay, I've got a motion, can I get a second? Okay, all in favor of this, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, public comment?
I'm gonna be there, I'll have a comment down the road.
Anyone have any issues, public comment? Ready to go? Okay, your word of office, sir?
I just, Mr. Flipsen mentioned he has that property coming in, I'm aware of that.
I just, what, Mr. Flutti mentioned he has that property coming in, I'm aware of that, that'll come back through you, that's gonna require some rezoning. He didn't rezone all of his property, he just rezoned some of his lots. So that is actually gonna come back through you for your approval in the future, so, just to let you know, I'm, I'm aware of it, and you, you will see it again if they approve it.
If it wasn't clear, um, when I asked, I was trying to get a visual in my head of the property that we discussed before, it sounds like it might be additional property that?
It's, it's gonna be lots, we're gonna have the apartment, so the property be shared apartment. Way out for a scene, you gotta go across the street from your apartment in the north. Across the alley.
Across the alley, yeah. That was potentially the drive there.
That's what, that's what I'm foreseeing, so.
And that whole lot, I guess that's what I was asking, I was looking at that whole lot, and some of it, he's saying, no, not the whole lot, but portions of some other lots.
Portions of other lots, yeah, he's got lots, he's got the, the lots.
All right. Is that your report?
That's mine. But you know, I do know what you're talking about here, it's.
Any discussions? All right, good job.
I'll make a motion, dear.
A motion? All in favor?